Okay, good evening, everybody. I'm calling to order City of Hayden Regular City Council Meeting. It is 27th of May 2025 approximately 5:02 PM. May we get a roll call of council members, please?
Council President Roder.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmember De Priest.
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Yes. Abby, you want to lead us in the pledge of allegiance this week?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we did have an addition to the agenda, which is Item 6A. Under Unfinished Business, the Hayden Canyon Park Concept Plan Presentation by Bernardo Wills. That item requires a motion to be added to the agenda. May we get a motion?
A motion that we add Item 6A as under Unfinished Business, the Hayden Canyon Park Concept Plan Presentation by Bernardo Wills.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion on the motions? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmember De Priest.
Yes.
And Council President Roder.
Yes.
Thank you, council. All right, first item we have up tonight is a presentation by Bill Judy Andor Barbara of our Historic Preservation Commission.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, council members, and citizens. My fellow Historic Preservation Commissioners and I are here this afternoon to acknowledge that May is National Preservation Month. Across the nation, preservation commissions like ours are recognizing partners, those individuals or groups that have contributed to sustaining historically significant items, buildings, or locations in our community for the benefit of our community. As the pace of change accelerates in the world around us, there's competition to shape our shared American experience. More than ever, we need an awareness of the roots in the past on which to base our sense of identity in the present and our directions for the future. There's no denying the role that preservationists can play in protecting historic spaces while meeting the needs of communities for the present and the future. The Stoddard Farm fits that classification. Since the City of Hayden purchased the property at 2355 West Prairie Avenue back in 2005, great care has been taken to deliberately maintain the agricultural characteristics of that eight-acre parcel. These include the barnyard theme throughout the park, which is adjacent to and a part of that surrounding neighborhood. The cherry tree north of Prairie Avenue and Chompers Cafe all bring light to the farm experience, which much of Hayden was built upon. We know Stoddard Farm has an interesting past, and because of you, it has a promising future. So it is altogether fitting that we would like to present the City of Hayden with our first Hayden Award for Excellence in Historic Preservation. Mayor, if you would come down, and Bill will hand that off to you. Yes, please.
The board states that the Hayden Historic Preservation Commission presents to the City of Hayden the Historic Preservation Award for the preservation efforts of the Stoddard Farm. We really appreciate your efforts without the city purchasing that property. It might be lost. And so we're really hoping that the city takes the lead on this. And congratulations.
Thank you.
Staff gets all the credit.
Parks and Recreation did a lot of stuff because they actually enhanced some of the park structures. Our next item is the Consent Calendar. All of the items on Consent Calendar action, they consist of approving of the May 13, 2025 Special City Council Meeting Minutes, approval of May 13, 2025 City Council Meeting Minutes, approval of Get NWLLC Purchase and Sale Agreement, approval of Redwood Haven Hometown Platte, approval of 2025 Hayden Days Entertainment Agreement with Jim Lean at Rhythm Dogs.
Don't sit and shut up. I was interrupting the meeting. I'm told I'm to present you with this.
Thank you.
I'll do my best. Thank you. Approval of 2025 Hayden Days Entertainment Agreement with Ruby Frog Entertainment for DJ Services, approval of termination of American Universal Storage LLC Deferred Annexation Agreement, and approval of bills for payment. Any questions on the consent calendar tonight? May we like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I... A motion that we approve the consent calendar as read.
Second? We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? May we get a roll call vote, please?
Council President Roder.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmember De Priest.
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Our next item is visitor public comments. We have two folks who wish to present or speak tonight. For those that are speaking tonight, this is a city council meeting transparently documenting city business. Although not a meeting with the public, citizens may address the dice if they fill out a card located on the table in the back of the room, as you have. Public comments are welcome but cannot address those issues that our city council will reasonably hold a hearing, including issues related to anticipated land use decisions. As we are here to positively build our city, please refrain from using the podium for spectacle. I will limit individual comments to three minutes. Speakers will state their name and primary residential city prior to addressing council. I encourage everyone to more meaningfully engage the city with a personal appointment with staff or myself. If there is a problem to solve, I'll visibly indicate when a speaker needs to conclude their comments. First up, Francine. Thank you. Oh, could you go to the podium, force? And there's a microphone there. Thank you, Francine.
I need a punch.
You state your name and your city, please.
I'm Francine Archambault, and I live in Hayden, Strawberry Field specifically.
Thank you.
On Bois-en-Berry Loop. And when my neighbor, adjacent neighbor on one, the north side, put and started an Aspen Tree last year, I told her that was a problem, to come in my yard and walk and see how bumpy this is, because I experienced the same thing on the other side, when they have two big trees like that, and came to my place. And then you have to either somebody, it's very expensive to take off all the roots. Some roots are impossible to take out. So now I have a picture of this on my phone, and it's over the fence. It's about 12, 13 feet or higher. So these trees, according to the nursery, new leaf, they have to be about five acres plus to be installed. It does not sell yet, so I was very, very upset. There is no code, and it's invasive, like you cannot imagine. It's affecting me, it's affecting the neighbors behind them, and the neighbors just said. And I rest my case on that.
Okay, thank you. Francine, would it be all right if someone from the city followed up with you?
I would love it.
Okay, thank you.
She's been in contact with the committee.
Okay, thank you. And next we have Rachel Otten.
My name is Rochelle Otten, and I'm from Rathrum. So I was pleased to note the Arts Commission memo has functional impact and fiscal impact regarding the Family Fall Fest. Those are definitely good things to consider. I do disagree with the practice of taking tax money away from citizens to fund art. That violates the proper role of government and violates free market principles of supporting arts and artists of the people's choosing. I also don't like the practice of unelected bureaucrats determining how tax dollars are spent. And can we trust unelected bureaucrats who have no direct accountability to the taxpayers, taxpaying voters, to spend tax funds in a way that actually benefits the community rather than promoting a woke, destructive agenda? So I'm not familiar with the Hayden Arts Commission who's on it, but if they're anything like the CDA Arts Commission, then they'll try to sneak in art and artists celebrating communism, sexual and satanic themes, obviously inappropriate for public. I noticed the memo states that one of the goals is providing an inclusive, family-friendly gathering space. While those words sound good at face value, we found out a few years ago that family-friendly can mean exactly the opposite. And inclusive seems to be a woke synonym for anti-Christian and anti-traditional family. I imagine you aren't going to do away with the Arts Commission on the spot, so the next best thing might be to require city council approval of all vendors that will be included at this festival. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Okay, our next agenda item is a commission report. First, we have Parks, Recreation, and Community Forestry Commission. Good evening.
My name's Malia Samsel. I'm the chair of the Parks, Recreation, Community Forestry Commission. So give it just a quick update on what we've been doing. Currently, finally, we're at a six-member commission, which is the most robust commission we've had in a couple of years. We have some really finely engaged commissioners. Four of them are brand-new. So we love to have them. That's a major update since last time I talked to you when I was begging for more applicants.
We got the word out. What a wonderful leader you are.
It's fantastic. That's their fault. They do all the work. I'll speak louder.
It's not a microphone.
Well, it's not for this room, so I'll just speak louder. So recent activity. We're getting to know the new commissioners that have just joined the board. Like I said, four of the six are brand-new. We just completed a couple of events that our commission volunteers for the kite festival happened just a few weeks ago. We had really fantastic turnout out there at Broadmoor Park. It was kind of neat that the wind stopped right as judging started and all the kites fell out of the sky.
It was there.
I don't believe we got in trouble with air traffic control this year, though.
We did not.
So we're improving. Also, Arbor Day just happened, right out back. Couple hundred kids, as usual. Five? Hundred. Ton of volunteers, full-day event, really consistently successful event for our community serving our elementary schoolers. Coming up next, we have in a few weeks, we're doing a workshop, basically because we are a new commission with so many new commissioners. We did have Donna come and educate us on a lot of financial things. We are doing a workshop to just clarify our goals and priorities coming up for the next year. We have... So we will be establishing subcommittees for certain projects. A consistent project that's always, for right now, is always on the table is the need for pickleball courts in our community. We still do not have public pickleball courts, and we have a few parks where that's an option, current parks as well as upcoming parks. So our goals will be recommending amenities for any park projects that are coming up, as well as spearheading the installation of amenities that our community has expressed the need for. Other events coming up in June, Dog Days of Summer is happening. It's a big fundraiser for our dog park in Crawford. Still looking for vendors, so we need some more vendors out there. That's June 21st. And then the Bike Rodeo. That's a really great event that we do in conjunction with the library, Cootney Health, the Sheriff's Department. And we have a great turnout, teaching bike safety, bike maintenance, that kind of thing. That's coming up June 25th. So that's our update. You guys will get my written quarterly reports, and I'll be back in like six months.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Applying a Zoning Commissioner.
Hello, Commissioner.
It's Sean, right?
Sean Taylor.
Thank you.
What do we have for you? Beginning of the year, my fellow commissioners did choose fit to reelect me as the chairman for this year. We also reelected Mary Howard as the vice chair. Mary recently had an opportunity to move to Wyoming to be closer to family, so she is no longer on the commission. At our last meeting, we did elect our second-longest-tenured commissioner, Keith Gibson, as the vice chair. And currently, we're made up of five members, which is just good so that we don't have I think we've had two condition use permits go through since January 1. One for light industrial manufacturing company in Warren Cay, and the other for a dog kennel in Warren Cay. So both were in Warren Cay. I think both will be good additions to the city for some jobs and also for some being able to take care of dogs and when people go travel. Other than that, upcoming, we have continued to work with the commissioners on the update of the comprehensive plan. Is our update from... Oh, I'm sorry, I have one other thing. One thing we've been seeing recently that I think is, as we all know, traffic is kind of a big, hot topic in the City of Hayden. We are seeing a lot of the newer developments coming in saying that they will put in traffic infrastructure prior to the impact fees coming in. So they're doing in lieu of, which I think is a good thing in that they're recognizing there are traffic issues and trying to mitigate them prior to having impact fees come in. I think there's some cost savings there in that you're not pushing those projects out two or three years, and also a public-private collaboration where they already have people ready to go. And so I think there's some cost savings to the city in that as well. So I think that's one thing that's encouraging. I don't know if that's coming from staff or from the developers as they're seeing this, but I think it is a good thing that we're seeing, and some of the things coming before us. That's all I have. Any questions for me?
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item is, our first item is a public hearing in support of updating Hayden's area of impact for submissions to Cooten County. Our staff has been working with adjacent cities to address lands that may be considered for annexation in the future years. So we're going to start the public hearing procedures. For those in the audience, the staff is going to make a presentation. Then we'll open up the hearing for public comment, which was directed to council, where you can ask questions of council. Then we're going to close the public hearing, and council will deliberate and then potentially render a decision. No questions. Well, they can ask questions, they just won't necessarily get answered.
For them to comment on the...
Yes, they could also comment. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'll jump in and step in for our public, excuse me, our community development director who's out today. So I'm jumping back into my roots, but it doesn't mean I'm going to be perfect. I always like to say I'm a recovering planner, so try to be a good one today. So as was mentioned, this is a public hearing to consider the area of impact that came as a result of legislation that changed in 2024, requiring all cities in the state of Idaho to renegotiate their contract or agreement with the county over our area of impact. There was also some changes within that legislation that warranted a new look at our area of impact because of the modifications made, and in particular, to deal with the ability to overlap our ACIs, or now called area of impact, as well as no longer allowing certain rules to have, or certain rules to have precedence over others. So the county's rules will preside over those area of impact, not an agreement of, possibly the city is or our agreement of both, to be the presiding law. So with that, I'll jump in. Let me back up. Planning and Zoning Commission did hold a public hearing on May 5, and did recommend forward to you the plan that will be presented tonight. So I mentioned the changes. This is the Local Land Use Planning Act, also commonly referred to as LUPA, is the presiding statute, which provides the language in the law requiring cities and counties to follow the land use planning level. So this is just a summary of that. When we look back at what the current area of impact is, you have the shared tier area, which is the area in which the city that got there first got to claim that. I'm looking to staff to correct me if I'm wrong on any of this. And to be able to acquire that land within their city, we now can't have overlapping, so we need to define what those areas are. The cities did meet and did agree to some new boundaries. We'll see what those are in a moment. So the area in white, I believe, is the part of our, well, maybe I'll take that back. So the area in the, I think it's labeled right, mine would be our area of impact to the north and to the west overlaps currently with the city of Rathrum, as well as cities' Post Falls.
Please send the mouse.
So in discussions with the cities, the city, we all met actually here in Hayden and looked at where the reality of our future growth will happen. One of the requirements of the new laws, that growth has to happen, in an anticipated timeframe of around five years. So it's really focusing and narrowing cities to think about what your logical step is over the course of a five-year period, and really holding us to that when we make our presentation to the VOCC. One big change, you'll notice the current area of city impact includes this area in the southeast corner. The reality of it in discussions with the city of Hayden Lake, they're served by Hayden Lake's gravity sewer, and there's really no logical reason the city would ever come in this area. So you'll note that in the future map, that shows that area is no longer being within the ACI.
Why is that removed?
Art, wait, please. No.
No.
You have an opportunity to speak when I call you up.
So the other area that we had to negotiate with other cities is what's our growth realistically along the western area of our city? And you'll see in discussions with the respective cities, in looking at that five-year period, this is the area that we seem to think logically is where it will be in five years' time. So as mentioned, we met with a number of the cities, as well as Dalton Gardens and the city of Hayden Lake. We've identified what we believe is the boundaries of our area of impact, looking at not only Idaho Code, but also our representative agencies surrounding us and our cities. And those recommendations came forward to planning and zoning, and now are being brought forward to council. I'm just going to go through this for slides to make sure there's anything missing. So it looks like the area of impact boundary was presented in map B based upon testimony received. So I believe you have a copy of that. Next steps, ideally where we're going with this is we need council to essentially give us the blessing to move forward with our approach to the Bonner County, or excuse me, the Cooten County Commissioners regarding the adoption of, or negotiate essentially that area of impact. They are the last body that has to approve that. So we're moving in that direction. Our goal is to be done by the end of this year as required by the state law. There are three motions for you to consider. We're hoping to help with any of them. I believe that's it.
Any questions for staff?
I have a question. Well, you actually answered one of my questions, which was a slide back of who it was we. You said we met.
Oh, we.
And so, yeah, so you clarified it, that it was city attorneys, the planners, and who else?
Yeah, it was mostly our, the administrative staff, including the city attorneys, to sort of make the, just trying to jump back here.
Okay.
The case for the why. Why would we be here? Why wouldn't we be here? Why do we want to concede over here? What are the plans and thinking through, not only from a legal standpoint, but also from an operational standpoint? Where are cities making strong investments for existing infrastructure, sewer, water, roads? And is it right for them to be there or another city to be there? And those are some of the concessions and discussions that were had. And that obviously is to our benefit, because the more we can agree on this, the stronger of a position we take with the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay. And the goal, just for clarification, of all of the administrative staff was to have every city present an area of impact to the county that does not include overlapping areas of impact, so that we're not presenting one to the county that has areas that overlap with Rathrum or Post Falls or Hayden, city of Hayden Lake.
And Dalton.
And Dalton, right.
I have one more question. It was, it's on the map. I was just wondering why the airport is included. How does that affect the airport? Can they annex later into Hayden, or are they always going to stay county?
You know, the way that the current law is written, we generally, and generally speaking, planners don't look to do what we call hostile takeovers of annexations. So we would be looking at working with the county if they were interested in incorporating, but...
But it's in Hayden's area of impact because it's completely surrounded by Hayden, so it doesn't matter, it doesn't make any sense for it to be in anybody else's area of impact.
Okay. So that just means it's in the area, it impacts them, but in the future, they may or may not.
May or may not.
Okay.
They may or may not ask.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
That's just for Hayden. Is there any shared tier left, or did Rathrum, Post Falls, and everybody take their pieces so that everything is basically addressed?
I haven't seen all of the other cities' end results. My guess would be is if they can articulate that they could be there in five years, there could be gaps where none of the county property was in an ACI or area of impact. But my guess is that they've all captured all of that area in their respective adjacent cities.
And our, the city of Hayden's proposed area of impact, as presented, if adopted, does not and would not overlap with any other city.
Well, that's kind of my question. I know if you were to go farther west, and you know, in the area between the share, what is currently, I guess, the shared tier, south of Rathrum, north of Post Falls, my basic question is, has, is there a border so that they basically take up all that so that for the most part, everybody knows, here's who has what?
Yes.
There's no question, is there?
Really, the areas of concession were, if I recall correctly, were there yet here? And Rathrum made a pretty strong pitch for they're already in this area and already annexing. So there's no reason for us to push back on that since we weren't there yet.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead, Tom.
There's someone I'd address to council. So I listened at the May 5 Planning and Zoning Meeting was really informative, and it made me do some of my own research. And so I understand how the new Idaho statute makes it harder for forced annexation, but there is one exception.
So let's, before you bring up annexation, though, we need to be really clear.
Yeah, yeah, I apologize. I threw that out there like a bomb, and I didn't mean...
Thank you.
...to do that.
Because...
Do you want, do you want to?
Yes.
Okay, why don't you state it, and then I'll ask my recorder.
Yeah. So it's unfortunate that at the same time the legislature changed the area of impact requirements, they also changed the annexation statute. So it makes it look like the purpose of the amendment to the area of impact is to somehow speak to the process for annexation or the desire of cities to annex. That is not what's happening. The annexation statute in and of itself has made it more difficult for a The annexation statute in and of itself has made it more difficult for a city to do what is called a forced annexation. It's, as a matter of fact, almost completely eliminated what we used to know as implied consent to annex and has virtually made annexation, I won't say 100%, but 95% it's at the request and/or consent of landowners. So it's, there's two pieces of this that have made this conversation across all the cities that I work with a little difficult. And that's that one is the area of impact statute uses the word annexation when it says you identify areas that you're likely to annex within the next five years. But that means at the request of the landowner, not a forced annexation by the city. And then that this statute was changed simultaneously with the annexation statute. So that's created a lot of confusion across communities. But the cities' process that they're going through tonight, the city of Hayden's process tonight, is just to be compliant with the new statute that says you need to identify, for most cities, a reduced area of impact and make it reasonable. And you need to present it to, it needs to be adopted by the county, presented to them and adopted by them in a timely manner. So this can all be completed by December 31st of 2025. The other thing this new area of impact statute did is it eliminated what we used to call the shared tier. So there used to be, well, there was two things. There was a shared tier and an exclusive tier. And an exclusive tier was the parameters of the city in the area of city impact that was identified by an agreement with us in the county that said, this is our exclusive tier. And if you build there, developers, I'm going to point at the developers in the room, if you build there, the city has a right to make you build out to their specifications. That has been removed. So we do not have an exclusive tier and the statute says we should no longer have a shared tier. But none of this speaks to any future annexations, requirement for annexations. And there's more constrained and defined guardrails on forced annexations.
Great.
Is that a good launching point for you?
Yes, that's awesome. So I just wanted to ask this one. It's a very nuanced issue related to everything you just summarized, is that there's, they have an exception for enclaves, 30 or fewer parcels. So I think of like those little islands of county within our city limits. Are those?
That would be one of the exceptions where you could initiate a forced annexation if you wanted to.
Okay.
Under certain parameters. And as Donna was here, as you heard in the planning and zoning presentation, in her 28 years here at the city of Hayden, has never initiated an annexation. It's always been requested. And I've been doing this for almost two and a half decades and have not represented a city that has done a forced hostile annexation.
Thank you for answering my questions.
Any other questions for staff or council? Matt?
My question is, so the cities, like we're doing tonight, will agree to whatever their, the ACI, what they, what they propose. And but the county has the final say on whether they'll adopt that. So they're not part in the negotiations of the three cities to determine what ACIs they want, the cities want. So do we have any indication what the county wants in all this? Or do they just want us to work it out? And they'll pretty much say, hey, if you guys have worked it out, that's good with us? Or do we have any kind of feedback from the county?
So my recollection was at the meeting that we had with all the cities that the county planner was present, was he not?
Not, I don't believe so. But I think we had a couple planners who had been in conversation with the county planner. And the indication at that time, and you can't hold them to it, but just the representation being made is as long as there's no overlapping areas of impact that they need to make a final decision on, they're likely to bless what we all present.
Well, and, and I mean, if you think about it in the reverse, the county isn't coming to us saying, here's what we're going to tell you. So I think that the good faith effort that the cities are making in reducing the friction for the county is that they'll likely work with the cities on our preferred path if we don't have conflict areas.
But we'll go to the county before all those conflicts are resolved then? Is that pretty much?
Yeah, I think we're all kind of working towards that. The respective cities are all in a process of bringing it forward through their planning and zoning commissions. And then, of course, their councils, similar to what the city of Hayden is doing. So, you know, with that frame of mind, I would think that we're all kind of moving towards one ask at the county and one, from what I would consider like the four, four cities, right, that all had that shared tier, exclusive tier areas. It's also my assumption that the other cities that are not in those areas are also working towards a similar path. But again, all trying to meet that December 25th or December 2025 deadline.
I think the last I heard, there was only one parcel left between Post Falls and Rathrum that they were still trying to negotiate whether or not they could agree on who gets it in their area of impact or if they were going to leave it to the county to decide. Other than that, I believe all the conflicts have been resolved.
Okay. Counsel, are we ready to move to public comment?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you okay if I sit or do you want me to stay up here?
Nope, you could sit. Could you leave the slide? I put the motions on it, the last slide.
Do you want for the public's benefit, though, would this be helpful?
Okay. All right. So we're now going to have
Bye, Sean.
Public comment.
Whoops.
Art, I'm going to have you go first because you didn't mark your card and I'm supposed to do fours first and then neutrals and then against. Can you tell me, are you four, against, or neutral?
Just have him go.
Just go.
You're up.
Appreciate having this lift there. I've got some questions, but you won't answer my question. So the question, I don't know what to do. Who am I supposed to see about the questions? But I have, I can make a comment. But in order to understand, this is 45 pages long. It's ridiculous that, you know, to go through this and understand it, you know, what I've given. Then we got two maps here. You know, one is the existing, the other one is proposed, you know, kind of thing. I'll have, I guess I can't say the questions, but.
Art, if you have questions, I'd recommend making an appointment with Donna.
Well, or ask them so they're in the public record, even if they can't be answered.
Or yeah, or at least if you have questions now you want to ask, they can't be answered. But at least staff will hear you and start formulating responses.
Will they be, will they be put in the minutes?
So you asked the question, if your council thinks it's important to get an answer to that question after the public hearing, they'll ask those questions of staff.
Well, do you want me to state the question?
Yes, please.
Okay. I'm assuming that the two changes to the existing area of impact is this one and this one, period. There's only two changes.
Okay.
I just want to make sure. Then I ask the question is, why is that removed from the present Hayden area of city impact? There's a, maybe a reason for it. Just like to know. I think the public should know that and so on. And is that been discussed with the people here? Or did someone just decide they're going to be out? Then on, what I'm suggesting that would be helpful for the public is to have a area of city impact map that would show the city limits, pertinent streets and roads, and land uses in each of the areas, commercial, residential, industrial, and agriculture. It's a separate map. Now the question is, would the area of city impact areas be put on a zoning map, a future land use map, or a blank map? That's a question. So the public can understand in a very concise, easy way how Hayden is going to get bigger. If they don't want it bigger, then they can say something. That's all. Okay. And I don't have, I don't know that, I'm assuming that this is Wyoming, this is Prairie, and this is Meyer. I guess, and I don't know. I'm assuming. Because I can't, I can't tell. Be helpful to know that. But, and the land uses in each area should not be mixed use, should not be residential suburban, and should not be anything with zoning, just land use, only land use. And there are four of them, commercial, residential, industrial, agriculture.
Thanks, Art.
Trying to be helpful.
Thank you. Okay, next up we have, is it Robert Balzer?
It is.
Would you please step up to the podium and state your name and your city where you live and provide your comments, please?
My name is Robert Balzer. I've lived in this county since the spring of 1940. Excuse me. Just strange things in old age happen. Anyhow, I've lived in this county since the spring of 1942, most of which I have spent in the immediate area of the city of Hayden. I don't understand quite what's going on here tonight. In some respects, I can see a couple of things, but I don't like either of what I see. One thing I don't understand is Art asked some questions and your staff, Mr. Mayor, and you were silent. I did not hear a comment on his questions. Don't we have a, some sort of an answer to his questions? Maybe somebody would like to know what's going on. I would. One, another thing, it is my recollection, and I believe it's somewhat correct, down in the dusty tomes of the city's records, it will say in there that you will utilize the open spaces of the city before the time you branch out and start waving your wings to encompass a larger portion of the area. Is that a fact?
We can answer the questions after.
The silence is rather deafening.
Well, it's not. It's just the process is you're supposed to provide comments on the hearing tonight. So just to be clear, the city is not looking to acquire these lands. We're looking to fulfill a state law by identifying lands that may be at the, most of the time, the request of the landowner to be annexed into the city. We don't take land.
Well, I don't know what else you call it. I guess I'm not smart enough to understand the political process. I've tried to stay away from the politics because I don't like it.
You're a smart man.
Well, I don't say that I'm a smart person, but I have learned a few things over the years. One other thing is my understanding, I believe this is a fact, an individual piece of property of 10 acres or more, if the owner does not want to go into the city, they cannot be taken in by force. Is that a correct statement?
Again, we're not, this is not a question and answer thing. If you have questions, absolutely. Please come see the staff. We'll answer every one of them.
This is where I think an old man like me is lost. I come to this meeting to hear some things, comment, and get some answers to some questions. Yet I'm told now I can come here, say my piece, walk away, and I don't know a blessed thing more than I did when I got here. Except I spent an hour and a half listening to a lot of stuff that most of which I don't even understand. I don't understand why, the way I understand this whole project, why you have encompassed that large an area in your failed swoop to gather this up. Did the state law require you to take a section that big? But I can't get that answer either, I guess, can I?
It could be that council asked those questions of staff and you could get your answer like that.
Kind of makes a person wonder why you even came, doesn't it?
So let me answer that question because we also answered that question at planning and zoning. And the reason to identify a healthy boundary around the city of Hayden is because if you don't, Rathrum and Post, you have no buffer and Rathrum and Post Falls are going to be right at your border. So the purpose of identifying this buffer around you that's not being swooped up, it's just a buffer, is so those other cities don't take it over from you and then you lose a chance to have it later.
How close to having either Rathrum or Post Falls jump up and grab land next to this piece or even take this piece right now?
They're already there.
But once again, you see, I can't get an answer to that.
They're already there.
Are they bordering this property?
They're already, their area of impact is already coming up to yours.
Does it touch the property in question?
Yes.
Very good. There's an answer. Thank you very much.
Only one answer.
We need to talk more to you. I can see that.
I would be happy to.
Well, I'm at a bit of a loss to understand what's going on in the world today, locally, anywhere. There are too many things taking place that don't seem to make a lot of good sense, at least to us old folks. And I would like to hope that those of you who have the authority to do some of these things, that you will give serious consideration to the people that you're going to try to encompass. I think they would appreciate that very much in years to come. And I think they'd appreciate it tomorrow very much also. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Robert.
Good day.
Okay, we have no more forms? Okay, so we're going to close the public hearing.
Do you want me to respond to some of the questions?
If.
Look to you guys.
I was going to say we're entered deliberations and council, you can choose to proceed with deliberations or schedule them for a later date. During deliberations, you can certainly ask the questions that were asked by both Robert or Art if you wish to, so that they get an answer tonight. Go ahead, Ed.
When we deliberate, yeah.
Does council wish to deliberate?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to deliberate. Who would like to go first? Ed, go ahead.
Yeah. Okay, a couple things here. And again, we've heard tonight, what I'm hearing a lot of and seeing a lot of, primarily, yes, social media type thing is exactly what we've kind of heard here tonight. There is a, for lack of a better term, spreading amongst the community that this is a land grab, in terms I've heard, that this is a land grab or an opportunity to force annexation. And it's just, we asked this question, I think it was the last meeting or recently, Donna, the planner, has been here 28 years. And I asked, have you ever seen Hayden have a forced annexation in her 20 years? The answer is no. This is not to facilitate forced annexation from anybody. As has been stated numerous times, this is statutorily required. Cities have to do this, okay? And to answer, I guess, this gentleman's question here, as, as, as council just said, the reason we do this is so that we do have a buffer because if we don't, if you, if you pay attention to what's happening in Post Falls and Rathrum in particular, they are gobbling up the prairie. Okay? And they will be on, if we said, okay, we're not, we don't want anymore. And this is how I, my observation is, if we said, no, we don't want west of Hutter, we don't want, I guarantee you, Post Falls, Rathrum, they're already in that corner, if they're at the top with the purple and the turquoise and the green, that's Brookshire or whatever it is up there. They're already there, Post Falls. Look at what's going on with the density especially, what's coming up into there. So this is, as council stated, a buffer so that we have, for lack of a better term, control if and when those landowners request to come into the city. I don't, Hayden's not going to go out and say, hey, get in here. Okay? That's so that if and when the people who live in that yellow right now to the west of Hutter say, we'd like to come in. And if Hayden wants to consider it, Hayden then at that time has the opportunity to say, well, you can come in, but here's the zoning, okay, the land use that we're, that we are going to allow you to do. It gives the cities that opportunity. And that's about the only opportunity, really, at that time, for a city to have, again, for lack of a better term, control of what happens to these areas. Okay?
And I think it's important, while you add, and we can answer Art's question with this as well, if this area of impact is If this area of impact is approved by the county, you're also currently working on an amended future land use map where the land uses in the area of impact will be identified. No zoning, but just the appropriate land uses will be identified for if those landowners want to come into the city.
And that's we have to keep harping on. If they want to come in, if they ask, the city's not going to go for it. The, I appreciate the fact that the southeast section up there, Hayden View, I believe it is, they took that out because it's fully developed. Has all the infrastructure and water, sewer, roads, everything. Why do we want it? Why do we want to take it on?
And it's not our, it's not the city of Hayden's infrastructure.
No.
You want to be clear.
That's, I believe, if I, I believe I asked that question. That's pretty much why it was taken out. Why do we want it? Why would we want it? Why would we want to take over pawing their roads and dealing with those issues up there? Okay? So my understanding is that's why, to answer your question, I guess, that's why it is not in our impact zone anymore. But I support this. But my main, as you can tell, my main frustration is so many people don't understand and are being misled and led down this road. Again, it's a conspiracy to gobble our land, and nothing is further from the truth. So I support it.
Matt or Sandy, anything?
I'd like to say, I haven't seen anything on social media like Councilmember DePree is saying about land grabs and forced annexations. I haven't seen any of that talk going on. This is a confusing issue, and it takes time to study it and get to know it better. And I think that hearing, the presentation tonight helped a lot. I would be in favor of giving my time right now to answering Art's questions because I believe those things were answered in previous presentations.
So I think we just answered a number of them in this last dialogue. Does any, did anybody keep a list? And are there any extra questions that weren't answered?
Well, he wanted to know about that huge property over by Hutter, why that one's being included, and why that one neighborhood that's already established, why that one's not being included.
So we just answered that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then also, he wanted to know if the, if these properties were going to be on the zoning map as just, as specific zones or just housing?
So they cannot be on the zoning map?
Okay.
Because they're not in your city? That's why I just said they will, your area of impact will identify its uses while you're working through this amended future land use map. Likely the end of June, you'll identify the uses for your area of impact. So the answer is yes. So Lisa, that portion on the west of Hutter, that large yellow piece, for everybody's edification, that was already in your area of impact.
It was in the shared tier.
It was in the shared tier. So, so we, so the city of Hayden has identified, and the other cities have agreed, that stays in Hayden's area of impact.
Which ones up? Okay.
The Rathrum ACI and the Rathrum City Boundaries just came over, if I understand correctly, the Ramo Dracks. And this area was also in the shared tier. This area will go to Rathrum and their ACI for the reasons stated that they provided, which are, I have backup to. And one thing, I was getting my cadence with this presentation, is to understand why you have an ACI beyond just sort of the political boundaries that the county wants us to see. And it's really to decide where your investment of infrastructure is going to continue. We have a large amount of infrastructure in our city, including our streets and our sewer lines and our forest veins and our lift stations. And so when we think about the continuation of that, it's building on infrastructure that we've already invested in. So it's logical that we're going to go out here, but we're probably not going to continue on in that five-year timeframe because that is a conclusion that has to be made too when you're thinking about how this is going to develop over time.
Okay, could you also point out, I think, is it that blue line is the city of Hayden line? And then the blue and black?
Yep, so this is our city limits.
Okay.
And then the checkered black dash line up there would be the current ACI boundary. Because this is shared tier, it's not technically officially ours. So we're showing this as a potential add. This is already there.
Okay.
This is an add because we're essentially dividing up the shared tier area into the respective areas of growth within five-year timeframe. The only other changes to the plan is actually a reduction in area. And that's going to be the hill over here as well as this area here. Because of the comments made, which is, we have no infrastructure there. We have no real interest in wanting to take over that from a maintenance perspective when we really have no other reason to be in there. So, you know, if it remains unaccounted for within an area of impact, that doesn't preclude that those property owners were coming forward and making a request to annex because they made the other requirements, which would be that they're adjacent to the city limits. Now, that is a component that could be still heard, but the likelihood of that happening within a five-year timeframe is likely not going to happen. So there's no purpose in us leaving it.
Okay, any other?
Sandy, were there any other questions on the list?
Uh, let's see.
There was one question that was made regarding the minimum amount of acreage requirement.
Yeah, Robert asked that one.
And my recollection, just going to go off memory here, is it's five-acre minimum. If it's agricultural lands and five acres, then the landowner has to agree to annex. So they have to have a consent form filled out. But we're not proposing any annexations with this. So that's where the confusion lies, I think, is the expectation that somehow by putting this there, that's, we're adding that land. We're not adding that, we're just essentially stating where we think we're going to grow within the next five years. It's a planning tool.
Okay. And could you just indicate if there are any enclaves there that are 30 residents or less in a?
Enclaves? Well, I would venture to guess, and I'm just guessing at this point, that we might have some properties in this area that are on the.
Emerald Estates.
Okay. Emerald Estates is probably too big.
Yeah.
Yeah, and my guess is that if there would, the conversation would occur, for whatever reason, they wanted to come and be on our sewer at some point. We would look at that at that time.
Okay, thank you so much.
Is that helpful?
Thank you.
I'll wait right here.
Stay where you are.
Thank you for, this is a lot of information, and I appreciate the staff working through all this and our attorney and giving us as much information as possible. The questions, I guess, I first want to say, I'm not a proponent, I'm not an advocate to annex more land into the city. That's where I come from. So, but we have to meet state law. If we don't do this, we will violate state law. And I don't know what happens then. Maybe we lose the ability to have an area of impact for the city of Hayden. So the number one priority is we've got to meet state law. So let's try the best possible way to be beneficial for the city of Hayden, the people of Hayden. And again, we've rejected some properties to be annexed into the city. I mean, that's, I'm one vote. Well, I can't control that. But I just want to quell that, that statement that's out there that we just want to grab land because I don't. We have enough issues that we need to fix regarding roads that we're trying to do that by adding more development doesn't help that problem and it makes it worse. And also, there's a sewer aspect of that, that we'd have to upgrade sewer systems and then that could be potentially more expense to our citizens. So, so I support this because we got to, we got to, we got to meet state law. And we got to do it by December of this year. And if it's already been negotiated where these boundaries are not overlapping, I don't see where fighting this or trying to change it anymore would be, I don't see any reason to do that at this point in time. Thanks, Matt. Tom, anything to add?
Just a statement. Prior to tonight's meeting, I did my own research on this, looking at the new, the changes to the state statute. And what pleased me was it puts more control in the hands of the residents who live in the county on the border of Hayden's city limits. So that they, it should give you more peace about where you live, that you will not be forcibly, forcibly annexed is not even a question anymore. So I don't know how to articulate it any better than that other than I was pleased to see what the changes in the legislation did.
Okay.
So.
Anyone in counsel like to make a motion at this moment?
Sure.
Thanks.
Yeah, I move to approve the amendment to the area of impact boundary as presented in map B based upon testimony received at the city council public hearing, the planning and zoning commission recommendation and the request.
Second. Okay, we have a motion of second. Is there any discussion on the motion being made? Maybe get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wade?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiffer?
Yes.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember DePree?
Yes.
Okay, our next item is the unfinished business item that was added by counsel, which is the Hayden Canyon Park Concept Plan Presentation by Bernardo Wills.
I'm sure I'm out of order to speak to you, Mr. Mayor, but.
Sorry, there, go ahead, real quick.
If you encompass this ground, how long do you think it will be taken into the city limits?
I just figured I'd leave it there.
I don't think they go into city limits until someone approaches us and asks us to bring them into the city. So it can be indefinitely? No.
Wow, learned something today.
Yes, sir. Have a good night.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Counsel, Mr. Mayor. We're excited to present the final concept master plan for the Hayden Community Park. We're going to try and keep this presentation to about 15 minutes, and then we can delve into any comments or questions that you folks have.
And just for counsel's clarity, this is not a decision item tonight. We're just getting a presentation.
Okay. We made a couple introductions here. My name's Del Hatch, I'm a landscape architect formerly with Bernardo Wills. I've just retired as of a few weeks ago. But kept on with this project because it's been one we've been working on now for quite a few months and hope to see it come together at the end here. I've got James Davis, also a landscape architect from Bernardo Wills. Melissa Cleveland from Welch Comer. So the design team, Bernardo Wills, Welch Comer, is only part of that team. The remainder of the team was a steering committee that was put together by the city. And those folks helped guide us through the entire process of the full design of the park, what were critical decisions to be made as we moved forward. And they were also proponents of the project and helped get the word out to the public as what we were doing and how we were going about it. One of the main things that we did was to create a mission statement early on. And when I say we, that entire team did that. And the mission statement was put in place to guide the process. So essentially, as something we could go back and check and make sure decisions we were making still held true to that mission statement. Competing the mission statement were a number of critical goals that we wanted to accomplish in the development of the park as well. One of the things we did early on with the steering committee and then reiterated it in the first public meeting was to give an inventory of the site, its physical characteristics and influences, and develop a map that we felt, from a physical standpoint, what the site offered as opportunities in the development of the park, what might be major constraints to that. So those were the three critical aspects. And along with the steering committee, we also, again, let me start with the mission statement. And this is critical, and I want to read it to you folks because, again, it's the one thing that guided us all the way through it. So our mission is to create a park that is recognized as a community gathering place, provides a safe and secure environment for all users, offering a variety of passive and active recreational opportunities for the residents of Hayden, the surrounding Hayden Canyon community, and visitors. It should respect and incorporate the natural characteristics of the site to present an aesthetically pleasing development, provide barrier-free access to the park components, and encourage and promote physical and community connectivity while allowing for expansion of desired future park elements. That's a mouthful. It's sort of an ambitious mission statement. But I think it was fitting for the way we approached this project. I mentioned that there were also some very critical goals that I'll read to you that we also used to gauge ourselves, see if we were accomplishing them as we move forward. So ensure that both vehicular access and parking are provided in a safe and adequate manner for the planned uses within the park. Provide complimentary park amenities that do not duplicate major amenities that exist within established nearby Hayden parks. Consider amenities that offer four-season recreational opportunities. Create trails and walking paths that connect the park components and link the park to the surrounding Hayden Canyon community. Recognize the likely need to phase park improvements to correspond to available funding opportunities and planned budgets. Create at least one unique feature or venue that is not currently offered in other Hayden parks. And the last one was to incorporate sustainable development and design solutions with a focus on achievable maintenance and cost responsibilities. We'll just go through how we approached this project. And as I move forward through the next couple of slides, I'll then turn it over to James, and he can walk you through the master plan. We held three major public meetings, and those were spaced over a time period of probably, ultimately, maybe five months. The very first meeting, we got a group of people in here, and it was one of the more well-attended meetings, explained to the group, cited inventory and analysis, what we were trying to achieve. And one of the critical things that we, not only did we want to achieve, but we had to achieve, was to meet the minimal requirements of the Hayden 2040 Park Recreation Plan. In that plan, they have a certain number of criteria that represent what was defined as a community park. So we explained that to everybody. Then we asked them all to sit down in separate tables, and I think we had five different groups. And our team sat with each group. And we gave them the same criteria that we were going to use. We asked them to lay out and design a park. It was fun, they got active in it, and they came back and gave us their presentation. We actually used that information later to generate what we felt were a couple of very representative illustrations of what the park could be. The second meeting, we came back, presented that to them, asked them to tell us what kind of elements within the park, what would be the characteristics, say, of a restroom shelter? What would they like to see? A playground? What do they think the court game, field opportunities might look like? And we gave them posters and dots and asked them to give us their preferences. Took that information, moved it into the third meeting where we refined all of that work and presented it to them again. I should say that as we're presenting to our public, intermittently, we're also checking back in with our steering committee. So we're asking them for their opinion. Do you think we're on the right track? Are we hearing what the public's telling us? And of those steering committee meetings, there were at least seven. There was one special council meeting that we also attended where we met and worked with the Hayden Charter School, who are right next door, and came to an understanding. the Hayden Charter School, who are right next door, and came to an understanding of what future uses might be adjacent to their property and what opportunities there might be. And then all of those concepts eventually, and again, as I mentioned from the 2040 plan, they're all boiled down into a couple of preliminary plans. And then we moved that into an open house and had what we felt was what we called the preliminary concept master plan. This drawing is here that James is going to walk you through, represents the final proposed master plan. But we presented the proposed preliminary plan. It didn't change substantially at all from what you're going to see here in this plan, but we had, again, steering people, steering committee people there. We had some public. It wasn't the most well-attended meeting, our open house, but we had drawings on boards, which we have, again, tonight, and we're going to leave copies with the city. We'll put them on easels here after we get done if people would like to look at them. So let me turn this over to James. He can walk you through this final plan. We've got a couple of different versions to look at and then we can talk about what we see as practical first-phase approach and what some of those costs might be.
So maybe I'll point up here. So just for everybody's reference, North Government Way is here, north, it's actually to the left, and Community Ave is on the bottom there, to your south.
Use that, just use the mouse.
The point of that is that they pick you up on the microphone there.
Action. Okay. So north is to the left, North Government Way here, and Community Ave at this location. So kind of the other point of reference here is the Hayden Canyon Charter School, which is this site here. So you can see we're right, we're right up against it. The full site is about 18 and a half acres. So first phase, again, incorporating what's required from the park's 2040 master plan is generally this area here in the middle. We'll speak to that in a second. But focusing kind of from this point here, this is sort of the active area of the park, which was decided on through, again, the iterations that we talked about. There's a series of pickleball courts, two basketball courts, two tennis courts, a large community playground with adjacent shelter, a picnic shelter, restroom building, and facilities here. Parking lot here, which accompanies or accounts for about 91 stalls and a skate park in this location. That sort of encapsulates the active, main active use of the park. We can then overflow out into the central lawn area, which was sort of a multi-use free-play zone, not defined by specific sports or teams, but to be more of a general use area for everybody to use. We have drawn in a dashed kind of scale version of like a soccer field, just so you can see the scale and what that may look like. But those are not intended to be formal lines. Moving further north, we have two entries to the site, which would come off North Government Way, one here to more of the south area of the site. Here would be the main entrance with wayfinding orientation to help visitors find their way. Heading north would be a second kind of central parking lot, which I believe has another 51 stalls or 39 stalls here, with 51 stalls up here, I believe. So overall, 180 sites or stalls for parking. Also, the public decided they'd really like to see a quiet contemplative garden, which is sort of this zone here, associated with some bocce ball, horseshoe pits, and picnicking areas. A secondary, smaller restroom shelter at this location, which would also serve as a secondary use of kind of a park maintenance facility. And then finally, towards the north end of the site, an off-leash dog park and a pump track slash BMX bike track for bikers. So that's sort of a overall, to sort of tie this all together, there's perimeter pathways that would be looped around the site for walking, various degrees of development from paved. Some of them would be paved, some of them would be more of a gravel surfacing. And then up here at the north, or excuse me, to the east of the site, where the contours form a natural hillside, the public generally consensus was, we would love to see a sledding hill there for kind of winter, winter activity. So that's what's shown here. I miss anything?
One last thing we might mention is there was a required set aside of a half of an acre right down there in that southwest corner for a public safety facility.
Could you be more specific? Public safety facility?
During our discussions, it was brought up at one time, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, but there was discussion that it might be sort of a police outpost. It could have been a fire response, something of that nature.
Thank you.
We show it just set aside and developed.
I guess so, moving to kind of our second to last slide here, here's another view of the park in a more of a perspective view. North is still this direction here, but just to see it in a little bit more real-life sort of perspective, all the same component, just from a different view. Thing to add there.
I don't, I think that does it pretty well. Just add a few things that you folks, most of you folks may recognize if you've been near this property. Everything on sort of this northeastern edge through here, as it moves in this direction, it becomes quite steep, quite rugged. That's part of the Hayden Canyon community. We butt right up to it. But the walking trail that James talked about that goes around the perimeter of the entire site is just short of one mile. So what we found in parks we developed in the past is when you can get a park with that kind of a length to a pathway, it becomes a really popular activity to go out for a three-mile walk and make three loops around the park, as an example. Just a couple more things. This is that location of that half acre that we talked about, set aside for the community use. Right through here, the sledding hill, it would, this drops off fairly steeply down into the charter school site. So working with charter school people, we're also a part of our steering committee. There'd be a berm put in through here and some planting of conifers. So kind of shifts all that use for the sledding hill a little bit to the northeast so it can run out into the field in that direction. This entire area today is treed. So putting the courts and the parking lot and the skate park into there is going to remove quite a few trees. We tried to maintain the native perimeter trees all the way through and all the way along, paralleling Government Way. There's also an additional requirement of a 30-foot wide buffer along Government Way that is to be left untouched. So that's why you see the, that illustration of the forested area all the way along North Government Way through that area.
One other item I'll add here, in conversations with the Hayden Charter School, as well as the general public, this item here, which was kind of a covered learning center amphitheater combination, sort of built into the hillside was the idea. That was a big item on the list, to have outdoor learning for, for any child that could visit the park as an opportunity for them. So. So finally, our last kind of task for this project was to develop what could be a Phase One of the park and associated rough costs. So again, Phase One, the request has been, what is Phase One to incorporate all of the 2040 base package components that are in the master plan? This outline and scope defines that and incorporates those. So through various means, communication with contractors that we deal with routinely, historical project costs from very recent projects we've completed or have bid numbers from, our estimated cost for Phase One is coming out to around 5.9 million with, identified here in yellow. And then all of the other outstanding areas from that highlighted area would be classified as a future phase or future phases, most likely, which would have an anticipated construction cost of around 7 million for a total construction cost, if built today, with today's numbers, at around 12.9 million, all in. So that's kind of, I guess, what we've come up with for costing. We understand it's obviously a lot of money, so phasing, additional phasing requirements may and could be likely necessary. But as of now, this is where we've landed.
Yeah, I think maybe the last thing to mention on the, on the cost estimate at this time, and of course, there's contributions from not only Bernardo Wills, but Welch Comer, and as James said, from a lot of the most recent park construction that's happened for us in the last couple of years. This is a fairly unique park. Not, not a lot of communities have the opportunity to create a community-sized park of 18 acres, so it's a big one. And it's not just kind of winged that this might be the cost. We have a detailed cost breakdown that will be part of the executive summary submitted to the city that has 270 line items that are actually costed out to create these numbers. So with that, we'd be happy to entertain any questions about process with the plan.
Counsel, any questions? Go ahead.
I'll go ahead.
Yes, I was going to ask, just for the sake of the public out here, could you show where Lancaster is to give more of a idea of where the park is located? A previous slide might have been easier.
I don't know if we have Lancaster on here.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's a little bit further to the south.
So it'd be to the far right of the slide here?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And then, so I was there for the very first show that you did and we got to sit down and move things around and brainstorm. That was fun. One of the questions that came up was about the parking at the school. Is that going to be shared parking with the park?
No.
No. Okay, so is there going to be a fence, a barrier put up?
Yeah, one of the, it's a good question. One of the items on that 2040 plan says, "The park shall be fenced." And we had quite a discussion with our steering committee about trying to securely fence over 18 acres and you can see kind of the rugged perimeter, a lot, that would be a lot of fencing. Discussion, eventually, our steering committee said, "We think that that steep slope that I pointed out is somewhat of its own barrier to the park all the way along," let's see, "all the way along through this area." We have quite an offset. I mentioned the, not only is the right of way of the government way happening all through here, and then there's that 30-foot buffer. We were not looking, we decided we would not fence along Government Way. But when we got down into the area through here, it's very traditional and almost essential that those court games get fenced, so that tennis balls aren't going out into roadways, basketballs don't run out, tennis balls, all of that. So those fences are usually at least 10 feet high, fencing around the courts and then fencing around the west and north edges of the school. With, let's see, James, one of those, there we go. Here's the school through here, so we're proposing that it's fenced through here. And then those, the perimeter fence of the school would then be attached with the fencing that comes all the way around the courts. These two blue arrows are already established points within the school's parking lot that would allow them to move to the north and to the west. And the pathway system that's laid out within the park allows for gates within their fence so that the school could have access into the park.
Okay. All right. And then I was going to ask about the bocce ball. I thought bocce just needed grass. Does it need a special court?
It depends how sophisticated you'd like to develop them to.
Oh, we're sophisticated.
Then, in that case, you're going to want them hard-hitched and the traditional surfacing for bocce ball is a crushed shell, that it can kind of be compacted. However, a lot of people will play it on a closely mown grass area. So that was a special request from some of the folks who attended the public meetings and said, gee, we'd sure love to have that. So we did show it. It's very, kind of hard to see, but it's up here, right in that area, closer to, as James mentioned, there's some picnicking that happens in through this area. And then the horseshoe pits were more in this area. So picnicking associated with those two activities.
Okay, thank you. Also, I was going to ask about the BMX. What kind of liability, is there any kind of liability to the city with the bikes and the accidents that could happen?
I would assume that there's the potential for some liability on an activity like that. Now, I'm not an expert on that. Might be a question for your counsel. Most of those facilities that I've seen associated with municipal park, there are signs and notices and saying, "You're here at your own risk, you know, there's potential for accidents, et cetera." But yeah, there's, there's probably some liability with something like that. It was a popular and requested element.
Remember that, yes. And the skateboard, that was requested too.
And it's, it also speaks, if I could, it also speaks to one of those goals that, could we include something that is unique to Hayden parks that we don't currently have? And that one was one of those elements that the people felt could answer that, along with the skate park.
And pickleball.
And pickleball.
Okay. And then the big question is, who pays for the development of this?
Well, that technically would be a question, I think, for your staff. And because, in all honesty, I am not fully familiar with how much the Hayden Canyon community will pay, how much the city may also contribute. What I do know is that the Hayden Canyon Development Group is committed to paying for a good portion of this park. And James, was it for the basic elements?
Correct, for the, for the base package.
Base package, which, again, is identified in that 2040 plan.
So can this be built in even smaller phases? Like if we need to just do the pickle card, pickleball courts, and then later the basketball, stuff like that? Or?
I would think if there was some agreed-upon latitude in what was considered to be the minimal requirements of a community park, and you could say, let's shift that one into Phase Two, let's move these three into Phase Three, I would think it could be pared back in that fashion.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate your answers.
Any comments on the board side?
I have some questions.
More questions?
Yeah. Thank you. Have you done any estimates on what the maintenance cost would be of a facility like this?
Good question. We've not done a full maintenance evaluation on a park like this. It is something that I counseled our steering committee on early on in recognizing that developing a park of this scale, 18 and a half acres, and having as much green, open turf, irrigation, mowing requirements, general maintenance, those types of things, that it would have to be something that would be built in and anticipated with each phase. And it's not only just, it's the manpower of who do you get to add to your city staff that can take on something like that? It's also the equipment that goes with it, that might require new mowers, things like that. So it's a great question. It's one that we always counsel, the cities and municipalities that we work with. You can't underestimate that. It has to be something that's built in over time. It's not going to be part of your construction estimate. that's built in over time. It's not going to be part of your construction estimate. It is something that should be accounted for as you move forward. We haven't done that yet.
Then, kind of related to that same question would be, because of the proximity of the park and all the amenities to the school, I'm sure the school's going to be using a lot of it. How will that be coordinated as to who has priority, which means someone's going to be scheduling, it sounds like?
Counsel, can we just do a gentle reminder? These guys are just designed, nothing beyond design. And their only job is to take the input from the requirements of the PUD and facilitate the process with the community to come up with a design that speaks to what the community input provided. They would have, you're free to ask those questions of staff, but these guys won't have any way of knowing any of that.
But that would be an issue.
We did, I'll say one thing. We did discuss that in some of our meetings. One of the special council meetings, I believe, was primarily to establish that, that directive. Who, who owns, who gets to say, I think the directive was, at the end of the day, this is a public park, and Hayden Charter School will have access to it, just like anybody else will in the community. But there will be, at this time, no special privileges. Now, down the line, there may be coordination of activity times where there might be opportunities for that. But as it stands today, public park, public access for all.
Yeah, and so Charter School would not, in our understanding through our discussions, would not have exclusive use of any of the elements of the park. City of Hayden, their Recreation Department and stuff will be scheduling practices and elements like that. No games, no official games, but practices and allowing that to become part of their overall recreation opportunities. James did mention the area right here on the hillside of some sort of a opportunity for an informal learning center, gathering spot. That would be something that we felt worked well with one of the elements, again, of that 2040 plan of incorporating interpretive stations along that one-mile loop that could speak to the native plantings, some of the native gardens that people hoped that we could develop here, what's the geology-like special properties that could become not only an educational component for the public, but something that the school might be able to take a class out and walk the loop, and it could become part of their, their learning experience. So those types of shared uses, the steering committee felt, would be very appropriate. And then the last one, James is circling right there, where the special council meeting was, because of concerns of the Hayden Canyon Charter School and their limited area that they had, the discussion was, would there be any potential in the future for the Charter School to purchase part of the park area so that they could then build a playground that could be specific to their school and not overload or overrun the public one? So that was identified right there. It's about one-half of an acre. You can see that we already show that there, there's potential to put grass volleyball courts in that area. And it is simply drawn there as a reminder that that discussion was held and that there was the potential in the future that there might be follow-up discussions with your counsel.
My concern about the process is when you put a group of people together and say, "Let's dream." You know, what would you love to have? I mean, who wouldn't like to go and, and design, say, your, your dream home, but then you, then you come to reality and you go, "How am I going to pay for the dream home?" And, and that's my concern is, is working and putting time and finances into something that, this is a big dream. This is huge. And, and so it's good that people put the time in to dream, but I think also we have to be realistic, because I'm really concerned about where the money's going to come from, and we have roads to fix. And I know that sounds simplistic, but that people are more concerned about the traffic issues. And we've also had Donna state that we already have enough, we have more than, more parkland in the city of Hayden than, than the calculations or the recommended number of acres. We're already above that. And so that's, that's just my two cents on it.
Thanks, Matt.
You guys did a great job, and that's not the issue.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move into our new business. Our first new item, "Ask Council to Consider Hayden Sky Phase One Preliminary Platte Request." For the public, this is a closed-record agenda item, so no new information may be considered during deliberations and potential decision. Does counsel need a presentation from staff, or was it packed enough? You know, Donna's not here.
I have questions and stuff like that, but I don't think I need any, any maps or any slides.
Okay.
You good with that, Lynn? You want me to just go put the motions up?
Clarifying questions from information you received.
Yeah.
Closed record that you filed.
Yeah.
Okay. So if counsel has a question to clarify anything that's in the closed record, please ask away of staff.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ed.
Yeah. My concern is related to the traffic impact analysis, and in particular, for the record, identifying any mitigation issues that was, that were identified in the traffic impact analysis, related to, you know, roads and intersections and things like that. Because I, I think it's very important that before, I understand this is preliminary plat, if I'm not mistaken, okay? So I guess we could move forward, but I want it very clear because there's been some, I don't know, I'll use the word ambiguity or miscommunications or whatever, but I don't understand clearly, based on previous discussions. Who's going to pay for the items that are identified in the traffic mitigation requirements? And I, first of all, I guess the question could be, could, is it possible to list the particular items of mitigation?
So if we're going to look at the conditions of approval.
Just trying to get that up, so. I just don't know them well enough to be able to go right to all of them, or in the particular ones I think you're referring to relative to the off-site improvements on streets?
Well, at least I'm pulling from the memo.
Yeah. I just...
Well, related to, I guess, the...
So we have required intersection improvements at Hayden Hutter, Hayden Carrington, and Downing at Hayden.
And what are those requirements of the improvements?
You'll see.
Their, their intersection improvements will also have condition number five that states that there will be a traffic impact mitigation agreement that shall be entered into regarding the required identified mitigation for off-site improvements as a result of the transportation impact analysis prior to construction plan approval of the first preliminary plat.
Okay, good. That's pretty much, I wanted to get that on the record, because I think I have to state that, where to go here? That the taxpayers, I don't know, how do I, how do I say this? Do not, are not on the hook for more than their fair share, I guess is the term that's used a lot. And I guess in particular, related to impact B reimbursement and the like, I think has been something that I think we'll, we'll need to be clearly, clearly and specifically delineated in, in the, in the agreement.
So the traffic mitigation plan and agreement will come back before you?
Okay.
So it's going, you're going to see that as an agreement in front of counsel anyways, which will be addressed again. If you make a decision on that traffic mitigation agreement that the developers are unhappy with, they'll have appeal rights and rights to go to the court if they don't like the proportionate share or calculations that have been put into the mitigation agreement. So there's plenty of measures going forward to identify what is it going to cost and who's going to pay for it, that mitigation plan. That is not before you have preliminary plat time, and that has to be finalized before they can get approval of construction.
I just want to make sure that we're very clear on that, that before any, any construction commences, that that particular, that and those particular issues are, are very specifically agreed upon.
That's why the condition's in there.
Okay.
Thanks, Ed.
Yeah.
Don?
Councilman De Priest covered my main concern.
Okay. Matters, Andy?
Yeah, this has to do with, if I get the right term right, it's extraordinary impact. Is that part of the record that, that the developer, if, did they receive notice that there's an extraordinary impact that this development has for intersections beyond their, these, these three that are mentioned there? Is that part of this process?
That condition number five is, it meant to encompass the traffic mitigation agreement. And that, of that, my guess is, is that the components of the extraordinary impact letter that they did receive by the city would be negotiated within this and brought back to counsel.
But the extraordinary impact letter itself is not part of your closed record?
Yes.
It's, but it, but it, but it is an element, that's an important element of moving forward.
And that's why condition five exists, to help identify within the record how we're going to negotiate that future impact mitigation agreement and come back before counsel.
We have to have an agreement between the city and developer on this mitigation before anything moves forward. Period.
Okay, but I just want to make sure that this extraordinary impact letter is in the forefront of making sure that number five is, is met.
It's been completed.
Anything else?
But you can't, we can't discuss the details of the extraordinary impact letter because it's not part of the record. The fact that they have to mitigate traffic is what's part of the record, and there's a condition built around that, and sent, and doing an analysis on extraordinary impact is part of that process, and that process is in the works. But it's not part of a record as to whether or not up to approve the preliminary plat.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that there isn't an ounce, it's just not included in the record. It has no force.
It absolutely has force. It's part of the process for this traffic impact mitigation agreement.
That's, that's all I want to make sure.
That's just a legal question.
That's why we have you here. Anything else?
Yeah, I was going to ask if the, so those traffic improvements on Hutter and Hayden are part of this first part?
Traffic impact mitigation agreement will be negotiated by the city and the applicant, and we'll bring that back before you. My guess is, is that anything that we've previously discussed in the form of a letter going to them will likely be included.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to motion that we approve PZE-24-0130 Hayden Sky Phase One Preliminary Platte Request.
Can you follow the rest, finding that it is?
Oh, oh, I'm, beg your pardon.
Thank you.
Maybe you can pick up.
That subdivision request.
Right here.
Yes.
Can you read that?
Could you put your cursor where, oh, yeah, there it is. Finding that it is in accord with the standards of Hayden City Code, based upon testimony received at the Planning and Zoning Commission Public Hearing and the Record of the Request.
And does your approval include the recommended conditions from staff, or that came from PZ?
You just need this with recommended.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Jeez.
Shall I start, shall I start from the beginning?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve PZE-24-0130 Hayden Sky Phase One Subdivision Request with Staff Recommended Conditions of Approval, finding that it is in accord with the standards of Hayden City Code, based on testimony received at the Planning and Zoning Commission Public Hearing and the Record of the Request.
Second. Okay, we have a motion. A second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Just one comment, if I may, and it's, it's related but not directly, but City Rathron just denied a 500-unit residential complex because of traffic issues.
They denied, let's be clear, though. They didn't deny a preliminary plat. They denied a reason.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, but there was...
Have different implications.
Yeah, and let's, please, counsel, limit comments to the motion being made, not to the news of the cities. Okay, neither comments? We'll get a roll call vote, please.
Counsel member White?
No.
Counsel president Roder?
Yes.
Counsel member De Priest?
Yes.
Counsel member Schaefer?
Yes.
Okay, our next item is an action item. "Ask Counsel to Consider a One-Year Extension in Support of a Previously Approved Preliminary Platte. The applicant, Mr. Booterbaw, has communicated issues meeting his original construction deadline." Does counsel need to ask any questions, or do you have any, is there any deliberation needs to be made? Or is it pretty straightforward and we could just do a...
Came before us previously.
Yes, this is just an extension of a preliminary plat. My understanding is the developer had problems with some construction gear and couldn't get the work done.
And if I may, the, the codes haven't changed since his, his original construction plan approval. And if he decides to move forward with this next construction season, it would actually be a benefit to staff as to not have to re-review and reapprove a minor subdivision again.
Thanks, Rob.
Meaning the extension is simpler than him reapplying.
When was the original council approval? It says that within two years.
I'm Booterbaw.
Yeah.
I'm the one that has Booterbaw states.
It was a minor subdivision, so council wouldn't...
Because what I'm reading...
It was a minor subdivision, so you would not have seen it.
Okay, here's my, where I'm going with this. Hayden Code 1234G identifies the following single-phase subdivision approval duration. Failure to file the final plat application within two years after the date of city council approval of a master development agreement, which approved the preliminary plat, shall cause all approvals of subdivision to be null and void unless an extension of one year has been applied for by the developer and approved by the council, except as provided subsection letter. After the two years have elapsed, the developer may apply for and receive additional extensions for good cause. So can this...
That's, that's what we're doing right here.
I mean, so this can go on.
We're getting an additional extension.
If he continues to have difficulty, that, I, I'm not reading this as, it's a definite termination date. It can continue on until he is able to secure what he needs.
As long as the plat has not expired, they can continue to ask for the one-year extension.
Well, maybe that's my question. When does the plat expire, then? Is that, is that in play here?
When you say no.
Oh, so we make that decision?
Yes.
So it could go on year to year until he's able to...
Yeah.
Okay.
And if we get to a point where the codes change, and which would affect his preliminary plat that was approved, then we would recommend a no at that time on the, on the staff end of things.
I just want to make sure we're not, I mean, running into a definite deadline here no matter what. But as long as we keep approving...
Before it expires after that one-year extension. So he has to apply within that timeframe.
He keeps applying.
Couldn't come in two years later and say, "I'd like another one-year extension after that year's extension's expired."
Right.
Okay, so this is just...
You cannot, no.
Oh, okay.
Sandy, you have a question?
I'm ready to make motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Is the rest of counsel ready?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
I move to approve the J2022-0722 Booterbaw States Minor Subdivision Extension of Preliminary Plat Approval Requested for one year, for one year, okay, based upon testimony received at the city council meeting and the Record of the Request.
Second. Okay, a motion. A second. Any questions on the motion? We'll get a roll call vote, please.
Counsel member De Priest?
Yep.
Counsel president Roder?
Yes.
Counsel member Schaefer?
Yes.
Counsel member White?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item 7C. Our third item here asks this counsel to consider allowing a family fall fest and authorization to serve alcohol at city park. I believe staffer, is Stephanie going to present?
I believe it's a combination of the two. I don't know who you want to go first. Abby.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I can...
Abby's going to do it?
Take this.
All right.
This is first.
Counsel.
Uh, so in your recent reports that you received from the Arts Commission, you were introduced to a project that they were working on for a community event this fall, and this is their request to continue moving forward with that event. So they are proposing to hold a family fall fest with a German theme. So it is called the 2025 Family Fall Fest Polka in the Park. And they are looking for council's approval to move forward with that event. Uh, second to that, they are also requesting for alcohol to be served in the park during this event via a beer and wine garden similar to other city events. This request to serve alcohol in the park does require council approval.
Okay, any questions for Abby?
Just question if it's family-friendly, uh, there's gotta be a separation between the minors and the adults because of the, the alcohol.
Yes.
Has that been addressed?
Yes, so a beer garden is required to serve alcohol in our park. It has to be completely fenced off with its own security that has, and whoever is the vendor of that beer garden would be responsible for ensuring all compliance with state law.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Sandy?
Um, I don't have any questions right now, but I do have a comment later.
Okay, Ed?
No.
Tom?
No.
Okay, does council want to make a motion or deliberate further?
I'd like to make a comment.
Okay.
Okay, I, I just feel like this polka event is going to be nine-plus hours long with a lot of vendors, and it's going to be a lot of work. And it seems like we have no procedures or protocols in place for something like this being done by a commission. And I wish we were given more information about the scope before the DJ was booked. And we hear over and over that the staff is being overworked, and so we're gonna need parks crew for this, a person on parks crew, and then we're also having staff. And we're gonna need to process vendor fees, screen applications, decide which ones to accept, screen potential volunteers, and all kinds of things. So I just think it's gonna put a burden on the staff that we weren't anticipating for. So, thank you.
Okay, anyone like to make a motion, please?
Oh, I'll kind of maybe have a follow-up comment to some degree. This is, is this a relatively new issue?
Yes.
Event with a commission putting something on like this? And it appears as though maybe they're just following the template of Hayden Days. Am I, am I correcting that somewhat assumption?
So, we have a number of city-sponsored events that happened, that's been happening in the city for many years, and so they're mirroring that, but this, to my knowledge, is the first request I've received since I've been the city administrator regarding a commission initiating a, an event. Where we don't have necessarily internal policies about new events, my motto is always when in doubt, bring it to council.
Yeah.
So that we can have a conversation around city events and what level of oversight both the executive branch and the legislative branch want to have and how these processes go forward.
So hypothetically, I guess, and looking at this in conjunction with a hypothetical, it appears as though they are following kind of the template of the others, and if they follow that template now, I'd say go ahead and approve them, but being as it is something new, I think you just talked about bringing it forward so that the council does, I guess, specifically create probably a template like related to commission-sponsored events, so.
Right, and I believe that the future of this conversation is that we're probably moving in that direction, but the request tonight is simply, can they move forward with planning this event? And likely, you know, that process could come back before council for decision points along the way.
When is the date of this?
September 16.
September, so we're a couple months ago, okay, okay.
May I speak?
Um, hold on, if, if we get through this without, that'd be easier, and if we need it, then we can. Go ahead, Tom.
So I, I listened to Councilwoman White, and I think she has some valid concerns. Can staff answer those questions?
I think the comments made by Councilmember White are accurate, it will take time, there will be some lift by staff, but I do know that the applicant, or the commission, excuse me, is trying to cover a lot of the event details with their staff, or their council or commission members as well as volunteers. So, you know, but there are certain things that the commission just can't do, they're not gonna vet vendors, they're not going to essentially process some of those aspects of the, the logistics of that event, that's, those just happen internally, so there will be some, but to the degree at which we would know exactly how much, and to give you an idea what that would be, I, you know, when we're piloting something like this and we're learning our way through it, sometimes it takes hindsight for us to know, so.
Okay, so we're all kind of agreeing this is a trial run to see whether this works or not?
Yeah, I think that any city-sponsored event might come forward in the future, or any event for that matter, with some protocols for answering questions, and we'll develop those, I think, as we look through this process and council were to authorize it to move forward.
So, I, I guess the only thing I really want to say is that I, I also have heard that staff is overworked, and I'm okay with moving forward as is proposed, just that we don't agree that this sort of sets the precedent and that really this is kind of like a trial run to see if it works out or not. That be okay with the rest of the council and staff?
I have one more comment. I have one more comment.
Go ahead.
Okay. I also forgot to mention that on top of the, having the beer garden, there's also the fact that the Coeur d'Alene Arts Commission was invited to join and share in the profits from it, and I haven't seen any plan from the Arts Commission for the use of their portion of the revenue.
Well, they're, they're not going to, that would have to come before council.
So, these are those questions that we would, as a, as staff, look to try to resolve, because the approval process of this event doesn't come with all the details associated with authorizing this, this is partly just giving you guys, giving the commission the mother ma'am approach of, can we move forward with this from a inquisitive place of learning our way through, and that we might come out of it with standards for what we'd want to consider, but most certainly would be the requirement that if we're sharing revenue, I want to make clear that we're not necessarily making profits here, but if we were, if we're sharing revenue, that would come back before this body for an authorization or agreement or MOU depending on the nature in which we would be entering in that relationship. So, again, that would not be something we would be here today to be able to know the details of that, but it would certainly be something that would come back before you.
And what's our process for approving vendors?
Again, another area that we will work with council on.
And can we hear from Chairman Satterfield?
If council wishes to hear from Chairman Satterfield, then that's fine, I was, I, given that all this is, is just the concept and the, as has been stated out, it's just simply the request for the concept, and because alcohol will be involved, it requires council's approval, that's why it's on the, on the agenda. We're not here tonight for every little detail associated with it.
Not yet, right.
And so that's what I was trying to avoid with too much information on a simple decision.
Right, and respectfully, Mayor, our commission is required by your statutes that we have a youth program every year that you pay for, and we're always looking at ways to make money because art's expensive and nobody wants to pay for it. So we had come up with the idea of doing this event and pairing it with our youth program that we are required by you to put on every year. I do want to make one correction, Councilmember White, the Coeur d'Alene Art Association did not come to us and ask us, that is, we're just in talks right now, nothing has been set in stone, nothing, you know, about that, it was just talk about how they're broke, we're broke, our commission's broke, and it might be a way for both parties to be able to make a little bit of money. And, uh, the, you know, the beer and wine garden, we have children all over at Hayden Days and different things, and this is just, we're one of the only communities in Cooten County, cities in Cooten County that doesn't put on a fall festival, and so we thought this might be a fun thing to do and pair it with our youth group that you require us to have every year, so we just thought we could kill two birds with one stone.
Okay, any other questions for Stephanie? Stephanie, thank you, we do appreciate that you're trying to do something in the fall, that's nice, fall festivals are nice for the community. Any other deliberations, or someone want to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion that we approve item six C, Arts Commission 2025 Family Fall Fest Polka in the Park Event Request.
Second. Motion, a second, any discussion on the motion being made?
Mayor, can I ask for clarification if that also includes the authorization to serve, or approval to serve alcohol in the park during the event?
Only if it's good beer. Okay. We get a roll call vote, please.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
No.
Councilmember De Priest?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Okay, our last new business item, asks the council to consider whether Arts Commission may apply for a T-Mobile grant which may provide Hayden with a $50,000 towards community-focused physical placemaking projects. This item only authorizes the application process. Any questions for staff?
Yes, I have questions.
Okay.
So as I read it, well, I'm gonna quote from it, "Projects must be shovel-ready and completed within 12 months," and the window of the grant application is pretty narrow. So is something already on, in the design?
Yes, we, if you remember last, last year? Yeah, last year we were shown a.
Okay, so at that time, that was a conceptual thing, so you all have gotten the artists on the hook, who's gonna do this?
It is still conceptual. It would be a, a, the process to select the art would move forward and be brought back to council for approval.
How much does public have a say in this?
Well, good, Tom, that the agenda item tonight is just simply to apply for a grant, whether.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm getting, I'm going out of my lane, I'm sorry.
It's okay, that's just the, that's the cart, we gotta get the horse done for it.
Yep, yep.
So typically when we're applying for grants, we'll come and ask for permission to go after a grant as a means to recognize that the, if we're selected for that grant, likely we'll enter into an agreement or a contract. So rather than bring you the contract first, at the first time you're hearing that, we ask you ahead of time to make sure you don't have any issues with a potential grant, or, excuse me, contract if we're successful in that receiving.
The only thing I want, it sounds like it's a, a pretty narrow use-it-or-lose-it window, right?
So part of the application of becoming, of submitting would have to be to submit a successful application that could be shown to achieve the, the results of, or the requirements of that grant, which would be to have it done within three months.
Okay, all right. Sandy?
In the future, could we have some kind of a, a public presentation process or even have the art displayed in the corridor before we move forward it, so we have some public opinion on it?
The art agenda, or the item isn't to approve the art, it is to approve, applying for the grant to get the funds to move forward with this project. Um, if, that is certainly something we can, if council desires, we can bring that back to the Arts Commission and proceed that way. But this agenda item is just for council to either approve or not approve the Arts Commission's.
Grant application process.
Grant application request to apply for the grant.
Hey, want council want to make a motion?
I'll do that. My motion is that we approve the T-Mobile hometown grant application request.
Second. And we have a motion, a second, any discussion on the motion? You get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember De Priest?
Yes.
And Council President Roder?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna move on to reports, city administrator report and calendar review.
Okay, I have, do have a little bit of a report tonight, so I'll, I'll try to make it quick. June 30th at 5:30 is the joint, next joint workshop with the city council and Planning and Zoning Commission, so we want to make sure you get that on your calendar.
That's the one which was supposed to happen a week ago, right?
So we're hoping.
Did you say June 30th?
June 30th, 5:30.
5:30.
That's a Monday night.
It's regular planning and zoning.
Okay.
And then I just felt important enough to tell you, to tell, give council and the members of the public an update on a couple of things, you know, this is our largest construction season, and to my knowledge, in the history of the city of Hayden, so as, and I, of course, I minimized my update here, so give me a second. With respect to the number of construction projects, we have the Ramsey Road Extension Project, the Forest Main Project, the Gravity Sewer Main Project, and the Lift Station Project. I just wanted to give council a update that all of those are still on track to finish by the end of this construction season, with the Forest Main looking like the longest one, finishing construction right around the first of December. You probably saw the road closure notice, the Lakes Highway District has authorized closure of Lancaster for the section of road which will use to construct the roundabout. That is a seven-week closure set to start tomorrow.
Oh.
So we've been doing some public engagements and announcements about that, and so we're hoping that the members of the public are, are seeing those signs, you saw them on the highway where it notes the detours that will have to take place.
Do we have any idea what that detour is gonna be? Thought I saw it.
Yeah, I, I couldn't say it right now, because I'm.
Is it like going up to Bagel?
I believe you have to go up to Bagel and then, or come down.
I came down south.
Warren K. and Hutter.
Sorry?
Warren K. to the east and Hutter to the west.
Okay.
Significant savings to the city by them allowing us to close it.
I think.
No, I'm not, I just.
There are some logistical challenges anytime you do that, but the end result should be that the project will be done quicker and for less money, so.
Little pain.
Should put a big sign up saying, you know, polka.
I'm happy to answer any questions, I did get a little update on the project, specifically those projects, but I don't want to belabor the, a report tonight with those, if you have questions, I'm happy to address them specifically. Uh, as council knows, we're kind of in the throes of fiscal year 26 budget with the next workshop being held this Thursday at 1:00 PM, which will be our major focus of balancing, or getting close to probably 90% of balancing the general fund budget. We don't typically have those hard numbers figured out yet this early because there are certain numbers that we don't get until later in the year, specifically, we won't know our health insurance increases until sometime in mid-June, we won't get our new construction values until late July, and then we're still in the throes of contract negotiations which could affect some of those line item expenses. But we'll go through all of those and give you guys an update on how we strategize on how we balance the budget. The auditors were here last week, and we're anxiously working our way through the fiscal year 23 audit, which has a tentative goal of being in front of you by the second meeting in June. So with that, we, we hope to finalize that year and then get into the 24 budget audit. Sorry, fiscal year audit, not budget audit.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that about the audit? I was gonna ask you about that.
Yeah, so the city is, the staff, the auditors were here last week, and the staff worked with the auditors, we've been every day working with the auditors. My hats off to our new finance director, she's doing amazing, our auditors have found that the amount of work that she's been able to do in the short amount of time has actually reduced our overall cost with them, so, but it's been a big lift for, for all of us in the finance department as well as some of the staff in other departments. The hope is to be in front of council for acceptance of the audit in the second meeting in June, and the purpose of that is, I won't be here the second, first meeting in June, nor will our finance director, so the thought was is that we be here the second meeting in June.
Wonderful.
A couple last, other couple things, the property sale that council authorized at the last meeting, Abby and I have been working on a, a plan to get information out around that, you'll, if you go to the city's website, you'll see there's information regarding that sale, we've also put, and I was hoping to show you, but didn't get it up on my email fast enough, a photo of, we ordered a big sign that's placed out there on the property, and it has a QR code that will link you to the website where information about the property. it has a QR code that will link you to the website where information about the properties for sale. And then we also are working on, if not already done, mailing all the landowners around there the same information. If you have any other ideas on what we could do, we'll gladly take them. And then the last thing I wanted to give council an update on was an opportunity that was reached out to me by the Blue Cross Foundation. Councilman Roder has alluded to some of the work that they're doing in the state over long-range planning, as well as other work to improve health within the communities across the state. They reached out with the mayor and I back in January about looking at their Community Health Academy. I've taken that academy at my previous employer. So we put in a, I guess, a request for consideration, and they selected the city as a community health champion, awardee, I guess you could call it. And they will take us through a process with a handful of staff members through the root causes of health, impacts of health in communities. So we're looking at that first meeting happening in June. And the neat thing about this, if we complete the program, is they give us a $20,000 grant that we could then turn around and use in a area of the city that we can demonstrate an improvement of health. And it could be as, we've, you know, in Bonners, we did a grant where we looked at wayfinding signage that told you how to get from point A to point B. So if it's, for example, in Hayden, how to get from government way to Honeysuckle Beach, you would have, you know, the mileage on there, and then you might have the distance for walking and maybe the caloric, you know, account that you might get if you walked there or rode a bike. So you could do a simple project like that, or it could be something more complimentary to another larger project. But just excited to see that we were selected as one of the only northern cities in the state. I think most of the cities are in southern Idaho, as well as southeastern Idaho. So it's neat to see many of the other mayors and staff members across the state participate in this program. It is wildly successful, and I'm looking forward to bringing back some good results. That is my update for tonight, unless you have any questions with me.
Lisa, to that, I'd like to add, thank you to staff for a pair of wonderful events with Arbor Day and our Veterans Day ceremonies. Both were spectacular and epitomized the positive aspects of the community we live in. So thank you. Does council have any questions for Lisa? Okay. While we have the presence of a brave deputy tonight, we are lacking command staff, so we're not going to have a law enforcement report tonight.
Correct.
And so.
I'm still here.
But you are here.
I have our paper.
And I, and I thanked our undersheriff for your presence.
There's another Hayden deputy out there.
Oh, yeah?
He's just braving it.
Anything happening tonight?
Every year.
Anything happening?
Well, that's why I was late. I was off doing stuff.
Wow. Does anybody from the council have a report to make relative to boards or other?
Can I bring up the thing that I discussed earlier?
Sure.
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't having to do with the Oxford. This is the question about Hayden and 95.
Oh, yes, actually, that's a, that's a good, yeah, that's a good question. I was not, go ahead, you go ahead.
Yeah, so this is for Public Works.
And it could be, it could actually fall under request for a future agenda item, potentially.
Right, yeah. So I'm friendly with the owner of the building on the southeast corner of Hayden and US 95. Two-wheeler dealer is the bike shop there, and they own the building, and they lease part of it out to your favorite eatery.
Great eatery.
And it was expressed to me that it's extremely frustrating for them as far as customers trying to get in and out of that parking lot, obviously, because it's such a poor location with respect to the intersection. And then the.
Agreed.
And then the observation that there are a lot of accidents occur there. So on behalf of the owner of the building, I'm here to ask, is there anything in the city's planning that might remediate this issue? Or anything we can do for them?
I would ask for some time to understand it personally, the problem, and to work with the staff and get back with you.
Sure.
So I'm gonna say, yes, we have a transportation master plan, and I can walk you through what we are planning on today and some of the, I guess, opportunities and constraints.
Okay. So when do you want to do that? Or do you want to bring that up as an item of discussion?
Particular property, so it's not a. Yeah, I would request that we just have a one-on-one to talk about that with.
That's fine.
Okay.
I'd like to mention that that property is in the urban renewal district as well.
Okay.
So they might have options.
Oh, that's a good point, yeah.
Are there any other requests for future agenda items?
I just want to make a comment. I owe everybody on the council and P and Z an apologies because we had a joint meeting. And that afternoon of that meeting, my wife and I were making our memorial service plans with our church. And then, so she has a memorial service coming up on Saturday, and a week later, my mother-in-law's memorial services. So we were hit pretty hard that day, and I failed to notify anybody. I just zoned it out. So I just want to apologize to the staff, and I know it was an inconvenience, and to P and Z, so I'm sorry.
Thanks, Matt.
This is Saturday, Matt?
This Saturday.
10 o'clock at Anthem on Highway 95 Miles.
Okay. All right, our next item is gonna go into executive session, so the public save travels home. We do need, yeah, I'll take a break once we pop in, but we do need a motion to go into executive session. We're going in support of Idaho Code 74-2061B and Idaho Code 74-2061C.
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session based on Idaho Code 74-2061B and Idaho Code 74-2061C.
Second. And we have motion is second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember De Priest?
Yes.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
All right, council, how about 7:23? Can we be back by then?
7:20. 7:20.